Okay, good morning, everyone. This is Steve Parsons, President of Third Mutual. I'd like to welcome you to the 50th Annual Meeting of the Third Laguna Hills Mutual Board of Directors of California Nonprofit Mutual Benefit Corporation. This is Thursday, November 5, 2020, at 9:30 a.m., and I'm broadcasting from the boardroom because of technical difficulties. So at this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and establish a quorum, which we do have. And at this time, if you would join me and welcome me in, Craig is one of our board members who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all. Thank you for joining me.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I still move.
Okay, and is there a second?
I'll talk the last.
Okay, are there any seconds?
Second. Push.
If there are no comments, additions, or modifications, we'll go ahead and consider that under common consensus. Okay, under item four, approval of the minutes from October 3, 2019, which was the 29th Annual Meeting of Members, do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
Not yet.
I check it.
Okay, unless there's any objection, we'll consider this under common consensus. Okay, want to acknowledge the media at a distance. And Chair's remarks, just have an opening statement here I'd like to share with you. You know, this has been a challenging year for everyone in Laguna Woods Village and indeed the residents of Third Mutual. We have been set upon by COVID-19, insurance hikes, program reductions, new Davis Sterling laws, and a referendum election. No matter your views on how many of these events, we want to thank you for your involvement as we are all working together for the betterment of Third Mutual. Your Board thanks you so much for your patience, awareness, and understanding through these trying times. Let me talk a little bit about each of these topics. We were driving hard into this year with high expectations of achievement. Then, insurance companies began to change the way they were doing business. We found out early in the year that natural disasters of all kinds were depleting the ability of insurance companies to provide adequate coverage at a reasonable price. We were asked to engage a certified company to reevaluate our real property to determine the up-to-date amount of the total replacement cost. The outcome of this was that our insurance premium rate doubled from 2019. What a shock. Instead of our premiums leveling out based on the increase from 2019, they doubled and are still projected to increase significantly for 2021 and 2022. Because of these yearly increases, we have had to implement program reductions in order to set aside funds for the insurance premiums. At the beginning of this year, we reduced our expenditures by over $2 million to help us with our insurance premiums. I think everyone is awake now to the results of this situation. Then COVID-19 hit. A pandemic covered our world and changed our lives, possibly forever. We are still figuring out exactly the nature of this disease and how to best combat it after 10 months. During this time, each one of you has shown Herculean patience and restraint. Some of you have lost a loved one or someone close to you. Others have seen the results that affected someone who contracted the disease and may not have fully recovered. Our lifestyles have been changed significantly. However, progress is being made, and we hope our preventative and curative results will too soon will be available to us. Along with all these unsettling events, we have received new Davis Sterling laws from Sacramento that are eroding the governance structure and purpose of HOAs and CID entities. Sacramento is taking away and significantly changing the original purposes for which our community and others like us were created. You will be hearing more about these changes over the next year. Our Board realized early on that our CCNRs were outdated, cumbersome, and needed to be updated, hence the referendum election that we are in the middle of at present. Some of you have stated you do not like changing the governing documents in any way. However, Sacramento has made it clear that we must conform to their way of thinking. There are many provisions in our documents that must be changed to conform to the new laws, many of which you will not like. We are working on these changes to fully understand the intent and purpose of each one and likely soon these will change over the next couple of years. We will be updating you with the new information frequently. But to move forward, we all want to share some of the accomplishments achieved in Third Laguna Hills Mutual over the course of the past year. To do this, we have a presentation highlighting different programs and events. Our board members will speak to you about our significant accomplishments as we go through a slide presentation. To start with, we will be presented an overview of communications by our first Vice President, Annie McCary.
Thank you, President Parsons. I just want to highlight some of the communications activity that we've been involved in for this year. One of the first things that we are involved in is a new resident orientation, which is an informational session providing an opportunity for new mutual residents to familiarize themselves with the operations of Third Mutual and to speak directly with a board member. Some of the topics that have been discussed include resident portal, how to contact resident services, some HO6 insurance, and the slides are catching up with me now. Matter alteration, just to name a few. This in-person sessions were suspended earlier in the year because of COVID-19. However, the information sessions have started up again in October, and these sessions are virtual. Residents who want to be a part of the new resident orientation need to register online and will be included in the orientation sessions. We are holding these sessions once a month, and the last session that we had, the class was field to capacity. So new resident orientation continues to be successful. Some of the other things that we're involved in is Village Breeze Magazine, and you can see a copy of it there on the slide. This is a new publication by the Media and Communication Department. They've received lots of really good feedback on the magazine. The magazine comes out every two months, and it is distributed village-wide. Included are articles written by Third Mutual Directors, also information pertaining to Third Mutual. In addition, two of the Third Mutual Directors are on the Breeze Advisory Committee. And again, this magazine covers a lot of the information that goes on in Third Mutual, including some of the new resolutions. It also talks about transportation. There is a map included in the magazine. There's information on security, social services, and basically anything that goes on within the village, in addition to Third Mutual, but village-wide. So again, this is a great accomplishment mainly by the Media and Communications Department, but Third Mutual has contributed and continue to contribute to the articles in the Breeze Magazine. We were doing appearances on TV6, and they were suspended for a while due to COVID-19. However, we started back up again in May, and what happens here is that the, once a month, one member from the Third Mutual will go on TV6 and highlight the discussions in the Board of the Third Mutual Board Meeting. So any highlights on that Board Meeting are communicated back to the residents through the TV6. We also, in terms of COVID-19, the housing mutuals, in conjunction with GRF, back in May, developed a 90-day resolution that discussed some behavior practices throughout the village. This resolution provided some guidelines aimed at minimizing the transmission of the COVID-19. Some of the rules included some guidelines for face covering when you're within the village. It addresses small, large group settings, and some other restrictions that have been posed by COVID-19. Again, the resolution was a 90-day resolution, and it expired October 23. And also, let's see here, we did some, Third Mutual along with the Village-wide, there was a protest protesting the Eris Hotels decision to house COVID-19 patients or people in the Eris Hotel in Laguna Woods. With coverage by TV6 and protests by mutual residents, we were able to get them to reverse that decision. So again, Third Mutual along with Village-wide participated in that protest. We still, this day broadcast has been increased to six days a week, and this is, Third Communications Committee is involved in scheduling Third Directors for this day. So Communications for Third Board and Village-wide is on this day, and they've increased the advertising, this day, to six days per week. In terms of GRF Media and Communications, our Third Communications Committee has not met, but we are a part of the GRF Media and Communications Committee. Two members from Third Mutual sit on that committee. Any discussions are brought back to the Third Board. And some of the highlights of that, again, are the publication of the Village Breeze Magazine. And I do believe that that is my report for 2019. Thank you, President Parsons.
Okay, honor to maintenance and construction, Director Bada.
Muted.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, guys, for letting me know about my microphone. I hope everybody is staying safe and healthy in this situation that we are. Today, we are going to talk about all the achievements of the Maintenance and Construction Department of our village. My first slide will be, this is a list of all the things I'm going to talk about. Next slide, please. The LED streetlights. I think this was the most anticipated project that we had in 2019 and '20. It got completed in March or April of 2020. We replaced 780 streetlights. And mind you, this has made a substantial difference. The top two pictures that you see, they are before and after. Next slide, please. This picture is a better representation of the new lights that we have. If you notice, the dispersion of the light is nice and bright, makes it easier. But mind you, this is just the phase one. We have plans to take forward this project in the coming year or two to make sure that all the empty spots of darkness is filled in. So right now, this is a big change and a well-accepted condition of the lights. Next slide, please. This is Gate 11. This was the last gate that was done earlier this year, and this makes it possible for all the gates to be secure with the automated arm and the control. I hear from the security that they are able to control the number of cars that go in and out and keep a track and keep it secure for our village. Next slide, please. Shepherd's crook. If you notice on the left, it's not a very good picture, but the one, it shows that there were barbed wires on top of the block walls. The right picture shows the metal fence, which gives it a much better look and more security than the look. So we are steadily completing the, all the perimeter of our Third Mutual with this. In the next few years, we will have it completely done. I know we are controlling the amount of length we do because of the cost of this expensive project that we have. Thank you. Next one, please. Parkway concrete. This is one of our biggest investments in our village. The roads and the sidewalks and all that that you walk on or drive. We steadily keep a track of the cracks in the pathway, and it is improved. The most important ones are done on a regular, immediately, and then the rest is completed as it ages. There is an age set for this, and our department, Maintenance and Construction Department, keeps a good eye on this and advises us on what needs to get done. The gray part that you see in the foreground is what we call the parkway concrete, and the one in the little further back is the blacktop. So that is the steel coat that we make sure is done on a regular basis so the cars drive safely without many bumps, and so does it keep a track of the, I mean, it takes care of the road also at the same time. Next slide, please. Garden villa laundry room flooring. Not many of us live in the garden villas, but the ones that live there appreciate this a lot because each floor has a laundry room, and the flooring gets worn out with the constant use. So these floors are constantly updated or taken care of. I wouldn't say constantly, but they are taken care of as needed. The left one is the before picture, and the right one is the after picture, and it keeps the room nice and clean and well-maintained. Next slide, please. Roofing. Roofing is also one of the most important part of our programs. 20 buildings totaling 145,000 square feet was scheduled for replacement with PVC cool roof system this year. Even though the department was closed for three months, they were able to catch up and replace, they already finished 17 buildings, and they plan to or hope to finish all 20 buildings by the end of the year, depending upon the weather, that too. The other part of it was that we had some buildings that had lightweight tile roofs, which were causing problems. They are being now being covered with composite shingles. These tile roofs were causing costly leak repairs and need replacements. Work started in November, and barring any inclement weather, should be completed by the end of the year. So this is the roofing part. Epoxy lining of our waste lines in the building. As you probably have heard, that there have been leaks in buildings, and they are being taken care of. So we have a twofold method. One is to take care of the leak immediately, and the other is to be, on review, we found that these pipes have been, over a period of time, like 50, 60 years, they have become solid in the center, if you see in the left picture. So we are now making a new, adopting a new system where they are cleaned out, and then an epoxy lining is being replaced with that, which makes it impervious for it to become, to back up again. And that's why this is a very important project. This year, we've been concentrating mainly on the three-story buildings, and we should be done by the end of the year. We should have completed six or seven of the three-story buildings. Very important project, and we pay close attention to the results of this. Thank you. Next one, please. Cul-de-sac signs was a very favorite project for many of us. With our aging community, larger numbers were very important, and the old style technology that we used did not reflect the numbers. So this one is larger, and it reflects the numbers, so it's easier to find. We have finished all the cul-de-sacs in the Third Mutual, and the next thing as we move forward will be the building signs, but not sure when we're going to bring that back. Currently, it's on the future item in our list. So the next slide, please. Elevators renovation. This is also a three-story building project. All, we have 83 or 84 buildings in the Third Mutual. And on a cycle, we have these elevators being renovated, and sometimes even the engine is replaced. So it's a very important project for the mobility of all our residents, and we take care of them at least 10 a year. So not sure exactly of the number, but this is an approximate number that's in my head right now. Next item, please. Actually, this is the, oh, prior to paint, sorry, this is the last slide on my list. This year, we made a board decision that we were painting all our buildings every 10 years. So we have changed it to a 15-year cycle. With that, it's done, we have two reasons to do that. Number one, our paint supplier and all the material suppliers have given us a warranty that will last 15 years with no change in cost. So that's one part of it. The second is that using a 15-year cycle, we will be able to save a good amount of money that we were spending on an annual basis. Actually, the money that we will be saving can be upwards of $700,000 a year in our budgets. So it's a win-win situation that we save money on one side, and in the second, we have the same warranty. So we started with this new program in 2020. And with that, I conclude my report on maintenance and construction. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Director Bada. Now we'll move to Director Ingdahl, who's going to be talking about the carryover maintenance and construction projects to next year.
Okay, thank you, Director Parsons. Some of these carryover projects are carried over because of the delays from COVID-19 and just availability of getting in and doing the jobs, and some of them due to other financial priorities. Next slide. Some of these, Director Bada had already touched on, I'll just give you a little bit of a remention of some of these. The parapet stucco and wall repair is pretty much limited to certain designs in the Gate 11 area, and about two-thirds have already been completed, and I guess the remainder will be done this coming year. Epoxy waistline remediation, I think Director Bada went into that pretty extensively. It is limited mainly to three-story buildings, but some others as well. Also, I'm an engineer, I was kind of curious as to just how they did that. If you're really curious enough, you can get on to YouTube and actually see movies of how they do this, video programs, kind of interesting. Elevator mechanical equipment replacement, some of it has been able to be delayed without any sacrifice in either service or safety. Building structures, certain things like some of the foundations, remediation will have to be delayed just for convenience and for a little bit of current cost savings. It'll be put over to next year. Director Bada also went into extensively to the paint and prior to paint activity, and that's, I would just want to emphasize that that has all been documented. We have written guarantees from the paint suppliers that the paint is good for 15 years, so that will be a continuing savings. Some of the energy projects will be delayed. For example, some of the electrical panels don't conform to current requirements, they don't conform to the latest codes. That does not mean they're unsafe, and anything that's brought up as a problem will certainly be attended to immediately. Golf cart parking, that's part of the eternal quest for parking that we all face. It's another project that can be put off without sacrificing safety, although it'll have a little minor effect on convenience. I think that's all I have. Thank you, Director Parsons.
Okay, thank you very much. On to Director Jarrett, who's going to be talking to us about landscape.
I want to talk about my favorite subject, landscape. First, I'd like to give a shout-out to the Third Landscape Committee that I've been working with for about the last 18 months. That includes Directors Annie McCary, Kush Bada, President Kareemee, and Ralph Ingdahl, as well as Advisor Cindy Baker. We are a team, and our staff officer is Kurt Raymond, who is the VMS Landscape Director. A newbie as far as VMS is concerned, as he has only been on board as Head of Landscape since March last year. Kurt has made significant changes in the landscape in the organization, and change doesn't take place overnight. It takes time and a lot of work. I do want to mention the tub grinder in this picture. It was a major, major purchase about the first of the year, and I think that GRF had to pay for that. Anyway, we all end up paying for it. It ends up grinding wood, and the trees that are cut down, and a lot of green waste material into mulch, and it's really worth its weight in gold. It was a big project with, we had, another big project we had going on this past year was aeration of the grass, and the grass had never been aerated in this village. So that was a really big project, but not good results, but we'll really see a lot better results in the springtime with our beautiful turf, so I can't wait. Landscape Services Overview. Can I have the next slide, please? Uh, can I have the next slide, please? Okay. Uh, I want to talk about, if you look at these acres of land that we have here in the village, we have six hundred and fifty-one total acres. In third, we have a hundred and sixty-five acres of turf, eighty-three of shr- eighty-three acres of shrubs, and a hundred and eighteen acres of slopes. That is a lot of acreage and we have fifteen, almost sixteen thousand trees. Now I want to let you know that a few thousand of those trees in third are fruit trees that are maintained in people's homes and really trying to get rid of those because of rodent control. Um, so we're going to be getting rid of those in a period of time as, uh, uh, people sell their units. Anyway, you can see if you look at United, how much acreage they have. Uh, not as much as us, but they have quite a bit. And GRF, as far as landscaping department is concerned, is a very small part. Most of their, uh, work for landscaping takes place around the gates and the clubhouses. Next slide, please. The landscape maintenance, maintenance manual. Uh, that is updated and on the village website. That is such a really great tool to have and, uh, it's a great resource which helps residents understand what personal landscaping is permitted around residents. I'm proud to say that the Landscape Committee provides updates to the director from time to time. And now that that landscape manual is on our website, which it wasn't, and, and it's kind of a new thing being on our website the last year or so, uh, we can do updates, uh, on an ongoing basis, so we don't have to wait to make an update and then have a printed version come out. So anybody's allowed to print that landscape manual if you would like. I want to give a shout out to our webmaster, because if residents really want to know what's going on in landscaping, you're going to find out a lot if you go to the website and look around. You will find not only the, uh, landscape manual, but now we have maps and schedules of the crews where they're working on the web, so that you can see when they're scheduled to work in your area. Next slide, please. Uh, yes, uh, we did, excuse me, we did a few modernization projects, getting rid of turf, which is very expensive to maintain. Um, anyway, this particular project here was, uh, on Cul-de-sac three twenty-three off of Bahia Blanca and we took the, uh, it's really a lot nicer now. In fact, I drove by it last week, so a lot of the plants are growing and it looks very nice. Next slide. Okay. This is a project up in Gate fourteen. This is actually the first, uh, landscape modernization project we did and, uh, it's really been, uh, really successful. Uh, it was starting in late twenty nineteen and completed early this year. The plot of turf there was a pretty sizable plot, but it allowed us to have, we ended up with a beautiful plot park with really beautiful drought tolerant plants, some decomposed granite paths and a few nice park, a couple of nice park benches. Again, this is a project, it was an enhancement to the community and a phase on water and maintenance. Uh, we were going to have an open house about March the eighteenth, we had it scheduled and that's when the COVID hit and we couldn't, of course, have an open house, so that was, that was a shame. But the plants have really grown since then, since that period of time. So if you have a chance to drive by there, I would say please do it, because we want to do more of these projects as time goes on. We've got to get rid of more grass. Okay, next slide, please. Yeah, that's just part of the same park project in Gate fourteen. Next slide. Okay, sta- staffing level, I've got a few of these slides from our landscape director because something happened to my landscapes, uh, presentation that I had a few months ago, I wanted to show today. But anyway, these are budgeted positions for landscaping. As you can see, that, this one goes back to twenty fourteen and, uh, I'll tell you, we had a lot of problems with landscaping. We had over the years and, um, you can see where the budget of positions went down. We had fewer and fewer positions and then Kurt has been, uh, building the landscape department up since he's been here and we have about a hundred and forty-nine, uh, full-time employees at this time, we're fully staffed. Most of the employees have been union employees over the years, but recently, some of these positions have been phased out and we contracted a lot of the work, especially on the larger slopes and nearly one hundred percent of the tree work. Response time is almost down to one day for problems of most kinds, with the exception of tree or rodent problems. Slope and tree work is a big part of our budget, each costing approximately eight hundred thousand dollars annually. Most of this work is contracted out, as I said, and this has worked very successfully. We still handle in-house small slopes and some tree work that needs, uh, immediate attention. Uh, next slide, please. Okay. Uh, you can see a lot of the, excuse me a moment, please, a lot of the challenges and successes we had are, are, well, there's a lot of challenges in the landscape department, believe me, because it's a lot of, uh, lot to, to take care of. Um, the highest priority is customer service and we, we tell, we, we say that all the time. When we hear people complain, for one thing, people will tell us that they called in and when we look at the call log, nobody's called in with problems. So we want to make sure that we want to, uh, improve your service, but we need you to call in to resident services. But the idea, um, the idea is to have high priority customer service, improve response time, reduce complaints, and have quantity of work completed while we have quality of work. Okay? Okay, next slide, please. Okay, landscape tickets. So you see here, we go back to twenty, twenty-ten, when there were fourteen thousand tickets at that time and if you look today, it was up to about nineteen thousand tickets, probably be by twenty thousand, maybe by the end of the year. But, uh, the ticket volume has gone up and then it started going, in decreasing when Kurt came into the play. Well, and it's really been, it's really been great to have this comparison. So I'll go to the next slide, please. So you can see the ticket volume, uh, a great deal with the ticket, the ticket volume is, um, about fourteen thousand total. And if you see, a lot of it, almost half is United, almost half is third and, uh, a little bit more is, uh, United, they have more land. But anyway, GRF is only about one percent, that's that little blue figure that you have there. All right, next slide, please. So these are all closed tickets. You can see, and, uh, the goal now is to have the tickets closed in one day's time. And, you know, we're getting pretty close to that. In the graph here, you can see in, in twenty-ten, there were about fourteen thousand completed and peaking about, uh, twenty seventeen to about twenty-one thousand. And now the ticket volume this year so far has been nineteen thousand and we still have a couple of months left to go. All right, next slide, please. The reorganization. The department was reorganized into, uh, two main groups of people. And the reason that Kurt had this reorgani- did this reorganization is so that he could delegate work more efficiently. He's got a lot of employees out there and a lot of, lot of contractors, so you need oversight. So that's one of the things he is, is trying to achieve here. And he wants to clarify responsibility and increase accountability. You see the picture there is the picture of our nursery and our nursery is off limits. And I'm not going to tell you why, because you can just imagine why people aren't allowed to live at the nursery. There's a lot of good reasons for that. Next slide, please. Okay, the trim cycles. They, they do quarterly trim every year and their, and the, uh, ground crew is divided up into eight sections. So if you, like I say, if you look on the website and you find, uh, you look under landscape and you will find a map there and it'll tell you who, where the crews are working this week. So they are, put up the new map, starting Monday for the week. And you can see whether your, your crew's going to be in your area that week. And the map is really nice, uh, it's really, it's really good. That's, that's new to the website, so that's really a great addition that Kurt added out there. Okay, next, next slide, please. Rodent control. Uh, we have had a lot of problems with rats, like everybody else in the world. Uh, it's a worldwide problem, but, um, the rodenticide that was being used, uh, was changed out and now they're continuing to develop comprehensive rodent control programs. Bean boxes are put out upon request based on rodent activity. The pilot program is ongoing with the contraceptives and right now, testing is in progress in the area of RV lots, the Equestrian Center and Clubhouse Two. The product is expensive and not budgeted, but quantitative results are needed before moving forward. A controlled study is being done at Clubhouse Two to determine the effectiveness. There are so many fruit trees in the community and the rodents love that falling fruit. We are constantly reminding people in our landscape meetings and our writings about the falling fruit, which needs to be picked up daily and any other food that you have out. We don't want, have anything that's going to attract the rodents. Next slide, please. Okay, the landscape service priorities for twenty twenty, as you can see, increase the service, service level, control the weeds, that's a big thing. Uh, we are getting three new gardeners, which is going to help. We're going to institute a new planting crew, we're going to continue the landscape modernization projects and I really want to see that happen, but in some areas, we've had some resistance from folks who do not want to give up their grass. But, uh, I don't know, I was just, uh, on a virtual meeting and Raisa was there also last week and, uh, it was put on by the Molten Waters District, but what they were talking about is all the people that, uh, are getting rid of the grass and they showed a lot of drought tolerant parks that we can go and look at. But we need to talk to people into allowing us to get rid of the grass and the other thing is to, uh, budget for it, because it's not cheap. Uh, although we did get a fifty-nine thousand dollar rebate on the, uh, Gate fourteen, uh, project this, this year, that was nice. Uh, we were going to continue the small tou- power tool replacement program, continue the retraining of the field crews and the mow patterns, uh, by doing the spray techniques. The spray techniques are much needed, because I've complained several times to Kurt that that some of the crews need to be trained when they're spraying that, uh, this, uh, whatever it is, they're putting around the irrigation boxes and some of the trees and stuff, because they made the swath too wide and it, it, and they're, they're training, they're retraining on some of this spray techniques. And they're increasing the use of plant growth regulators, these are working successfully, thank goodness. But I think things are really working up in landscape and I want to thank again, uh, the committee and the landscape, landscape director. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Director Jarrett. Uh, I'd like to talk with you for a little bit about resales and leasing, if I could have the slides up, please. Next slide. Okay, here we want to talk about resales and, uh, as you can see by the graphs, as my narrative comes forward, you can follow along together. Uh, sales are down seventy-four units from last year through October of this year. Total sales volume is down eighteen point four percent from last year and COVID nineteen has not helped us in our cause to keep up to the normal amount of sales. However, the average resale price is up three point two percent over last year to four hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and nine dollars. The number of units on the market averages about a hundred and eighteen units at a given time. Now remember, all this is, uh, geared toward Third Mutual. The average days on the market is an average of approximately thirty-five days. Uh, in talking with some real estate folks, they said demands, uh, remain strong. We look forward to an increase in sales in twenty twenty-one. Next slide, please. Here it is depicting again over since January of this year and, uh, you can tell this year is in green for the twenty twenty sales, January through September. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, leasing. Leasing fluctuates with the season, but follows a yearly trend normally. Through September, our leasing rate was twenty-seven point four percent. Uh, approximate through October, our leasing rate is roughly twenty-seven point eight percent. We're having to do things manually, so in the near future, we'll be able to give you a more exact percentage on this. We're almost the same percent this year as last year through September. So, uh, we are going up again a little bit from twenty-seven point four. Uh, earlier in the year and last year, we hit a little over twenty-eight percent, so it seems to be stabilizing in that area as of present. Okay, next slide, please. This again is depicting the, uh, monthly leasing, January through September of this year and that's in green, follow the green bar there. Okay, we'll move on now to, uh, financials and over to Director Mutschnik. Robert, take it away.
Thank you, President Parsons, I appreciate it. It's my pleasure as your treasurer to share with you the financial data for Third Mutual through September thirtieth. I'm sorry, my slides are not as pretty as those of landscaping or of, uh, M and C and, uh, but mine have to deal with numbers. Uh, next slide, please. This slide provides you with an overview of how income has increased month over month for the three months ending September thirtieth. From Septi- from August thirty-first to September thirtieth, Third Mutual saw an additional assessment revenue in the amount of two million, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. So that at the end of August, Third Mutual had a total assessment revenue of twenty-four million, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. That's depicted on the left-hand side of the graph in the, uh, green bar. Okay? The increase in assessment revenue from August to the end of September is consistent with the increase for each of the previous three months. In terms of non-assessment revenue, which is the little bars just, uh, on the left there, uh, there was an additional hundred and seventeen thousand dollars brought in since the end of August. This created a total revenue of twenty-six million, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars by the end of September. That's the bars in the center, the green bar in the center, meaning an additional revenue of two million, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand since the end of August. There was an increase in the non-assessment revenue of thirty-two thousand dollars, creating a positive increase in the total revenue for the month of September. Expenses increased, uh, during this time period by an additional two million, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, leaving Third Mutual with a net revenue of four million, fifteen thousand dollars, which is an increase of forty-two thousand dollars in net revenue for the past thirty days. As we reported last month, and this is now something we'll expect to happen over the next month as well, we expect net, net revenue increases to actually slow down, since we've now brought back all the employees and have restarted most of our temporarily delayed projects. Next slide, please. This slide presents data for operating fund only for the months of July, August, and September. Assessment revenue increased over the most recent thirty-day period by one million, six hundred and eighty-five Assessment revenue increased over the most recent 30-day period by $1,685,000. That's the bars on the far left side of the chart, the green bars indicating $15,171,000 total operating income for the last, up until this time period. So assessment revenue increased in the most recent 30-day period by $1,685,000, the same amount as the previous month. So in other words, our operating income from assessment revenue basically stays the same month over month. Non-assessment revenue increased by $120,000 for total revenue increase for the last 30 days of $1,602,000 during the same period. Third total expenses increased by $1,823,000. This reduced our operating surplus, $18,000, to a final sum for this period of $512,000. This is consistent and expected as we reported to you last month. Next slide, please. This slide compares our revenues and expenses to what was actually budgeted. As can be seen from the slide, actual and budgeted assessment revenue was, as one would expect, the same in terms of non-assessment revenue. Third Mutual non-assessment revenue for the month of September was greater than anticipated by a budget of $366,000. Expenses for the month of September were less than budgeted, leaving a variance of actual revenue minus expenses versus what was budgeted of a plus $6,149,000. Again, don't think of this positive variance as one that Third Mutual can maintain. Now that we are back at full force, this variance will most likely decline as the year progresses. Next slide. This slide provides you with a picture of select budget items and the current variance associated with each for the end of September, and it compares it to the previous two months. You also have an opportunity to see how each of these variances compares for July and August. The green bar represents the variances at the end of July, while the gold bars represent the amount of variance for each category at the end of August, and the brown bars represent this reporting period, September. Actually, it doesn't even look like brown. It looks like green is the bar, actually is the top, that is, September. I apologize. It looked different on my slide at home. As you can see, looking only at the green bars, Third has a favorable variance for each of the categories from outside service, employee compensation, unrealized gains on AFS, materials and supplies, and utilities and telephone for the period ending September 30th. The last two categories have an unfavorable variance. In the case of insurance, we have expected this, the unfavorable variance is a result of the higher-than-expected premiums currently to the tune of an additional $410,000. I'm sorry to say that this variance will continue to be unfavorable for the rest of 2020. The unfavorable variance of $147,000 for fees and charges, this is an unfavorable balance because determination hearings must be held before members can be billed for their share of the moisture improvement costs. However, the good news is that this $147,000 shows an improvement in this category of $10,000 over the previous month, which as you can see was approximately $157,000. So again, as we have more determination hearings, we anticipate a continued decline in this negative variance. Next slide, please. This slide simply is two pie charts, one on the left for August 31st, while the one on the right is for total non-assessment revenue for the period ending September 30th. Third had additional total non-assessment income of $116,000 over the previous month. Most of the different categories of the two pie charts stay fairly similar in terms of the percent of revenue they generated, with the exception of the unrealized gain on AFS, which dropped 4% month over month. Next slide, please. This slide depicts again two pie charts for comparison purposes. Month over month, Third had additional expenses of $2,838,000. The percentage of expense for each of these categories remained the same month over month. So if you look, you see outside services was 23% of the cost in August and it's 23% of the cost in September, and the others follow suit. Next slide. This is probably one of the more important slides that you should look at. This gives you, in the lower right-hand corner, as of the 30th of September, Third Mutual had almost $32,401,000 for reserves and contingencies. This represents an increase in this category of approximately $71,000 for the past month. This includes, if you look along the bottom of the chart, $74,000 in the Garden Villa Fund, just over $4 million in the unappropriated expenditures fund, $9 million in the disaster fund, and $19 million in the replacement fund. Year-to-date, Third had $10.7 million in contributions and interest added to these funds, while we had $7 million in expenditures for a net year-to-date increase of just over $3.6 million, which is a total increase in the non-operating fund balances. Slide nine. Next slide. All right, this slide compares the different fund balances for the past five years, which have averaged approximately $28.6 million. Please note that Third has been committed to supporting the goals of the reserve requirements while at the same time trying to balance the need for unexpected events. You should also note that this year, actually end of last year, we switched over to a company called Sage View to manage our investments and actually the return that we received from Sage View so far this year has been quite favorable, especially given the volatility of the market. And that concludes the report because the next slide is one that President Parsons talked about with regards to our resales. And that finishes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on now to the water report by Director Karimi.
President Parsons, members of the Third Mutual residents, good morning. Water committee focuses on three main goals as we go into the next year. Although COVID situation and closing the face-to-face meetings and reduce contact time, meeting time affect our effort tremendously, but we are moving forward with our goals and activities. Goal number one is for the waters committee is being a liaison between the Altora Water and our great landscaping committee and landscaping department. Over the last year, we have converted several of our irrigation systems from potable water to recycled water. Also landscaping department, as Director Jarrett mentioned, worked on several projects to convert several public area from water turf landscaping to beautiful drought-resistant and water conservation landscaping. Just those two activities have and will reduce our water bill for foreseeable future. The goal two is to work as a liaison between Altora Water and M&amp;C Committee and M&amp;C Department. This is more focused on water conservation for residents and by changing the more water, changing to more water efficient systems such as the toilet, dishwasher, and water heater units that uses less water and also give rebate back to our residents. Goal three, focused on working with Altora Water and gather all water-saving ideas from the water providers and transfer them to members. They use a potable water, I have to mention, is each member's responsibility. Our water bill will go up due to the rate increase, that's, you know, that's a fact. But we can control that with our awareness of the personal water usage at our home. And I request please help us to help ourselves by conserving water, saving money, and protecting our environment. Also, I want to thank our VMS staff for dedication and the hard work through the year. That's my report, Mr. Parsons.
Thank you very much. Director Frankel will be talking to us about traffic hearings.
Traffic hearings are held on a monthly basis. And a board member from each mutual, including the towers, is sitting in judgment of the residents and their guests who commit violations of our traffic rules. The hearings are also, the hearings are administered by the security department, who also administers the entire village's traffic control program. Speeding and stop sign failures, violations are collected on video by the village's security officers. Additionally, photos are taken on a variety of violations, including parking clutter storing vehicles, registration issues, lack of decals, overnight parking without the proper permit. Parking violations are issued not only for parking in red zones, but also for parking on the sidewalk and parking in manor parking garages without decals. A traffic rules guideline, manual is available, which defines all of our traffic rules and the applicable fine system for violators found guilty of offense. Traffic hearings are held in the board. Violators are shown the videos or photos and given an opportunity to explain any circumstances which may be applicable. Persons receiving a traffic ticket for a moving violation may choose to attend a two-hour traffic school with only a $20 fine. Subsequent violations receive increased fines. The first violation committed is usually given a warning. Only a small percentage of traffic violations choose to present their circumstances to the hearing board, which averages 12 each month. Most receive a ticket, simply choose to pay the fine and not present their case, and there's hundreds. Estimated breakdown of the types of violations is heavily on the parking, speeding is only about 20%, stop signs about 20%, and then lots of other little miscellaneous ones. And that completes my report.
Thank you very much, John. Next slide, please. I'd like to talk with you for a little bit about compliance. A lot of you have heard some things about it, but let me just recap some of the activities of this area. Total number of cases through September was 310. The average caseload per coordinator was 103. And those categories with high violations were as follows: animal nuisance, clutter, delinquent accounts, illegal occupancy, and nuisance. Nuisance is a broad category, but affects many different things. Areas of improvement for each of us is to lower our speed and stop at stop signs throughout the village. This is an ongoing thing that we are looking at. All in all, we're doing better in most areas than last year. Let's make it even better for the next year. Thanks to all of you who are paying attention to this. Okay, Director Jarrett, would you take us into the Garden Villas, please?
Thank you, President Parsons. Okay, the recreation rooms in the Garden Villas. The replacement components of all 53 rec rooms in Third Mutual are paid for through surcharges by all 22 to 24 manor owners in each of our 53 Garden Villa three-story buildings. We have a budget of about $72,000 per year and all components being replaced are planned according to the need of each room. The rec room committee usually meets quarterly, but this year, due to the pandemic hitting in March, not only did we just have two meetings this year, but all of the rec rooms have been closed since mid-March. They are certainly not places where we want people to congregate in a closed environment right now. During the downtime, the superb maintenance staffer, Mo Doctor, who inspects, works, and supervises work in the rec rooms, was on furlough from mid-March to late August. Work was completely halted during that time. Once back to work, he began calling vendors to get new quotes on items needed and he started the work at full speed. He was able to complete the work by the 1st of October without having to coordinate with residents needing the rooms since they weren't available to them. As you can see here, there's quite a bit of maintenance activity going on with the kitchen renovations, three full kitchens painted this year, five women's bathrooms and men's bathrooms, mirrors were replaced, the women's bathroom countertops, some were replaced, some window coverings, five rec rooms were painted, five carpets replaced, five refrigerators were replaced, three microwaves, and assorted billiard table accessories. I'll show you some pictures of work completed. Next slide, please. Here's the ladies' room where the countertop was replaced with epoxy and it really, really looked nice. It looked so much nicer. The old countertops were cracked and everything. Next slide, please. And the old window blinds were kind of like what they call the Venetian blinds and they were awful. They were awful. So now we're starting to replace those kind of blinds with faux wood and they are so much nicer looking and everybody loves them. Very nice. Next, please. Okay, here is a rec room with an accent wall painted in the back. You can see on the right where the accent wall was painted and when the paint was done and it really, really looks nice. So what happens when we do an accent wall in a rec room, when a rec room's going to be painted, the people in the building, they meet with someone for maintenance and they pick out the colors. So there's a variety of different colors that they can choose from, but they're usually more in the earth tones. Okay, next, please. Okay, these are the carpet tiles and they're so much superior to the old carpet that we used to have. So it's going to be nice, it's going to take several years to get all the carpets replaced in 53 buildings. But the carpet tiles are superb because it works out better if, you know, they have a bad tear or something or they wear out a spot, overwear. Because we've had that happen in one building, we put new carpet in, they chose a really light color and it was over on the golf course and people were coming in to the side doors from the golf course and coming on that light beige carpet and in no time, it was terrible. If they would have had the tile carpeting in there, they could have replaced a couple of tiles and that would have been it. So that's where we're going in that direction for carpet and rec rooms. Next, please. Okay, let me just show you the picture. I don't know what happened to the other picture I had here of the smaller refrigerator, but they have the old small refrigerator. So now we're trying to get a large refrigerator put in every rec room because we really need one. Thank you. Next slide. And here's just a picture of a billiard table, but you can see on the left-hand side where it was, the felt was damaged. So here on the right-hand side, the brand-new felt. So we have to be careful that we don't damage the felt because it's expensive to replace. And we also buy the replaced accessories they need with the poles and balls and that kind of thing in there for the billiard tables. Next slide. Oh, that was it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Director Jarrett. Okay, on to the resolutions that we worked on and passed during this year. Director Mutchnik's going to give us an update.
Thank you, Director Parsons. Have the next slide, please. Once again, I have no pretty pictures to share with you. I followed landscape the last time, now I'm following Garden Villas. But let me talk to you about some of these policies because they have a great impact on decisions that some people are going to make. The number one policy, smoke-free building. This was at the request of members of Third Mutual, that the board developed and approved a policy allowing residents to initiate and have approved their building as a smoke-free building. All members who are All members who are record owners of units in a building have to agree in writing before a notary public that the building should be non-smoking. There is a formal procedure that needs to be followed and forms completed that include a covenant to run with the land. That's making it a non-smoking building designation. Keep in mind that once a building is designated a non-smoking building, like I said, it takes every owner in that building to agree and support the endeavor for the building to be identified as a non-smoking building. But once it is identified that way, if an owner chooses to sell his unit or her unit, the non-smoking designation stays with the unit and the new owner. So think very carefully if this is a direction that you want to go. But that's now available to all buildings in Third Mutual. The second resolution that I want to talk about is the alternative heat source policy. Many of the manors in Third originally had radiant heating from the ceiling, which owners in many instances have wanted to replace with more modern systems. Owners can alter the existing radiant heat source that is hardwired and installed on a dedicated circuit. Okay? Also, where the original radiant heat system has been compromised due to penetrations made to the ceiling, the thermostat must be disconnected from the system. So if owners want to replace the radiant heating, they have that option, but it has to be on a dedicated, hardwired circuit. Okay, number three: good standing policy. The good standing policy is a resolution that defines actually what good standing is and the implications of the lack of good standing. Simply stated, a member is considered to be in good standing who is not in violation of the governing documents of Third Mutual. Nuisance policy and harassment policy. These were two policies that were passed this year that set up the guidelines for complaints received by the board, the actual procedures that the board has to follow. The board is now required by law to actually investigate all harassment charges that are leveled against individuals, either other members of the mutual, staff members, or board members. So that's now, we now have a policy in place that provides us with specific procedures to do both harassment investigations and nuisance policy issues. Okay, the sixth one is a species-based tree trimming policy. This was talked about by Lynn Jarrett when she mentioned landscaping, but this was passed actually at the very end, actually the very beginning of this year. The mutual maintains over 15,000 trees. Of those 15,000 trees, there are 224 different species of trees that each have different growth rates. And rather than trim the trees based on an inspection on a rotating basis every 34 months, it was determined that it best serves the community to actually trim the trees based on the type of species and when it needs to be trimmed. Some needs to be trimmed much more frequently than others. So that now we have this new schedule, and we have contracted this out to an outside vendor. And this is, hopefully, will reduce inefficiencies and service requests to trim trees will be improved. Okay, number eight: amendment to guidelines, sorry, lease cap and lease waiting. President Parsons talked earlier about the percentage of manors that are currently leased in Third. And he reported to you that it was 27.4% at the moment. It has been running higher at almost 28%. So the board thought, well, since we have a 30% lease cap, that we needed to establish a wait list policy so that if we ever reach the 30% level, we would then have a policy in place that would allow us to determine how to allow people to lease their manors. So if we reached 30%, we would create a wait list. The first person on the wait list would then be given an opportunity to lease their manor if somebody who was under the 30% cap no longer leases their unit. I suggest to you very strongly that you take a close look at this policy and that you get a copy of it for your review. And if you know anybody who's thinking about buying a manor, that they also be acquainted with this policy as well. All right, income requirement for guarantors. With the passage of this resolution, the income requirement for guarantors changes from the current $80,000. Instead, it becomes the sum of $150,000 plus the annual mortgage payment. So a guarantor who has to live in the state of California has to have an income of $150,000 plus the annual mortgage payment. This resolution was the result of a review of the guidelines for financial qualifications that revealed an apparent discrepancy in the administration of financial qualifications applicable to applicants and to guarantors. This resolution, even though it was passed this year, will go into effect January 1, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that concludes our reports. We'd like to move on now to acknowledging directors with expiring terms. And I'll read them off to you. Annie McCarrery, Robert Mouchnick, John Frankel, and Doug Gibson. In Doug Gibson's case, he came on in February to fill a vacated position by Bunny Carpenter, who moved to GRF. And Doug has chosen not to return. So we thank him so much for his service, and he wants to continue working with us on committee, so we're very happy about that. Okay, on to item nine. To give you an update on the election results of the restatement of the Third bylaws and CCRs. As you might remember, on the 2nd of November, we were going to have a cutoff period and go ahead and formulate and count the ballots. However, we had a lot of people call us throughout last week and even currently who did not receive a ballot. In fact, one person received, or he requested replacement ballots three times, never received any of the four that should have come to him. We have other people with two times. Other people just didn't receive it at all. Well, one thing that happened to me is in my building, on the night of the 2nd of November, when the cutoff was 5 o'clock to give your ballots in here at the community center, my neighbor and I received our mail at 5:30. The neighbor knocked on my door and showed me his ballot that had just come at 5:30. Now, we don't know the real extent of what is going on. However, we need to praise you that the ballots were mailed from Northern California. And the director of inspections, Inspector of Elections, mentioned that she has had problems with other elections going on where ballots were not received on time. So just to keep you updated, also, the board voted in a majority to continue on with the voting availability period to the 4th of December. When we set up a contract with the inspector of elections, we notified her that we are retaining the right to extend out the voting time so that we could get a quorum of people to vote. And remember, the quorum was 67% of our units. So we have a lot of people that want to vote. They've called a number of board members, as well as PR firm, as well as Inspector of Elections. They want to vote. They don't want to close until they vote. How are they going to vote? Have no idea. They didn't share that with us, but they want to vote. So we wanted to bring that up to you at this time so that you'd have an update and realize that you can still continue to vote. The box is back up here at the community center. And if you still need a ballot, call the director of election, and we'll get you one, even if it's overnighted. Last week, we had to overnight over 100 ballots from people that wanted to get them to be able to vote. So that's still an option. Okay, that's an update on that. I'd like to go ahead and move on to the acknowledgement of the Inspector of Elections, Catherine Burkhardt of Uni-elect Election Services. In this particular case this year, it was kind of unique. We did not have to use her services to count the ballotsing for candidates running for a position. We had enough candidates this year, just enough, to fill the vacancies, so it was filled by acclamation. The law changed this year, allowing us to do it, so we didn't have to go through a voting process for candidates if the number of vacancies equaled the number of candidates. So that's what we've done this year. So to that, I'd like to recognize to the board and welcome new members to us, who are Deborah Dotson and Donna Rain Shostak. Now, you might remember in a previous meeting, Donna gave about a five-minute recap of her background and all like that. But Deborah was out of town on personal business for a couple of weeks, so she wasn't able to. So I've asked her if she would at this time, just to give us a few minutes of her background and introduce herself. Donna? Excuse me, Deborah.
You're muted. You're muted.
Deborah, you're muted.
My bad. Thank you. Thank you for letting me know. I always hate that when other people do it, and then I did it, right? I'm going to repeat. I actually wrote my stuff down, so that's why I didn't see that I was still muted. So I want to, because I'm going to read it because I would never be able to say all this. So thank you, President Parsons and the whole board. I thank you for this opportunity. This is not only a great honor, but a great responsibility, and it's one that I really don't take lightly. We all moved to Laguna Woods Village to enjoy the fruits of our labor and our active retirement years in a peaceful location with benefits such as activities, exercise options, and much more. Those days will return. We don't know exactly when, but we know that they will. And I want to commend the current board members for their commitment to our residents and the hard work that they've performed, particularly during the current challenges of this pandemic. This has been an unprecedented time and causing a lot of stress to our residents. So again, I appreciate the hard work of this board over these past several months to keep us all safe. A little bit about me. As a lifelong learner, I obtained my bachelor's degree in leadership and organizational development in my 40s and an MED in learning and technology a couple of years ago. My careers have been really wide-ranging, and my background includes nearly 40 years now of executive-level management in healthcare. Most recently, I worked in educational technology sales and net channel management. And I developed a love of learning while I was doing that, becoming a trainer, providing a lot of professional development. And I now work as an adjunct professor at National University and University of Maryland. Those are both part-time contract roles, and they are actually quite fulfilling. So I guess you would call that my pre-retirement instead of my retirement. How did I get to the woods? About three years ago, I was working my corporate job, and I was working a lot in Southern California. And I was staying in hotels and with friends, and I came upon Laguna Woods Village, and I met the age requirement. So I bought in a little tiny piddies in United, and it was great. And then last year, I bought in Third. I bought a really nice two-bedroom condo, so I'm very happy there. And of course, I have a lot of stake in our community with two properties. So I want to talk about that a little bit. We have a wonderful community with beautiful surroundings. Our beach is just a short drive away. But we are facing the crossroads of sustainability in the future for our community. From infrastructure to landscape, it's incumbent upon this board to make strategic plans for our residents that will allow us to sustain what we have now and improve the quality of our lives in the future without the fear of future financial implications or other stresses. That being said, we all know that everything increases in price. We don't pay the same for food at the grocery store as we did 20 years ago, so we can't expect that we're going to pay the same now for our services. But there is much work for us here as we navigate these waters. You know, it's been a tough time for this community, and much of the grumbling and discontent has come from people being, you know, quarantined in their homes in the pandemic. But our rules have kept us extraordinarily safe with very low numbers. And I think that we did the right things here, and I strongly believe in the CDC guidelines and include the use of masks and hope that we continue to wear masks in our community for as long as it takes to get control of the pandemic. We need to do what's right for all of our residents and the greater good, not just a few that want more. When you live in this type of community, it isn't about you. It's about us. We are reopening our facilities safely, and we all look forward to normalcy in the future. You all don't know me yet, and I don't know many of you, but I believe we all share a common goal. And my fiduciary responsibilities on this board are at the top of my list as I join and will treat the money of the board and our community like I do my own, prudently and within the budget. You know, I don't believe, I'm active on social media, but I don't want everybody to believe everything they read on there or the globe that is gospel. I worked with K-12 educators and students for many years and saw a lot of online bullying. And I hate that we see it here with our own senior community. And just know that we're all working for the greater good of this community. My responsibilities as a board member will include the ensure effective strategic planning and assist with implementation. We must monitor and strengthen our programs and services. I will work diligently to ensure adequate financial resources. And in order to be a good board member is to protect assets and provide proper financial oversight. Our board ensures financial controls are in place and helps develop the annual budget with help of Director Munchen. I treat that seriously and will treat our money like my own. Our board has accountable and competent members. We want to be transparent to you, and it is of critical importance. It's my duty to ensure legal and ethical integrity. This board is ultimately responsible for that, and I pledge that to keep first and foremost in my decision-making. I look forward to joining communities to bolster my involvement here, and there's plenty of work ahead. As an overachiever, I'm always working, and one day I'll take my semi-retirement seriously, but not quite yet. My work here has just begun, and I will fight for what's best for our community as a whole. As the saying goes, it takes a village. Thank you for letting me join this fine board, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Deborah, very much. Glad you could be with us today, and your personal matters have been taken care of. I would like to introduce at this time the continuing directors, which is Director Annie McCary, Director John Frankel, and Director Robert Mouchnick. So those together with Deborah Dotson and Donna Rain Shostak, I think I got her name correct here, will be filling out our board and moving forward as of today. So in light of that, we're coming to the close of this meeting. So I would like to go around and just take member comments. Okay, John Frankel, member comment?
It's a pleasure to be a member of such a wonderful team. We are really and truly a team, and I'm a team player. And I continue to, and I'm looking forward to continuing that relationship.
Okay, thank you very much. Annie?
Thank you, President Parsons. I'm honored to serve again as part of the Third Mutual Board of Directors. I look forward to the commitment for the upcoming year, and I look forward to working with all the other directors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kushmada?
Thank you, Director Parsons. First of all, I'd like to thank Director Gibson for his time and great participation. We will miss him on the board. Also, I enjoyed working with everybody on the board for the last year plus the previous years. So I'm looking forward to working with our new board members and the rest- So I'm looking forward to working with our new Board members and the rest of you. Let's go ahead and do some more good for our village and our mutual. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director Jared?
I have really enjoyed my work on the Board with the team we've had this year. It's really been wonderful under Steve's leadership. Thank you, Steve. And thank all of you, because it's really been a pleasure working with you. It's been a pleasure working with the staff we work with. And Doug, we're going to miss you. And Donna and Debbie, welcome on Board. So anyway, thanks for a good year, looking for a new year, starting today.
Thank you. And Director Doug Gibson?
Well, I'd like to welcome Donna and Debbie for stepping into the Third Mutual Board. Their backgrounds are strong and everything else. I'm sure they're going to be a great asset to working with the Board, and I'm certainly available if you have any questions on how you get into the rookie situation or out of the rookie situation with the Board. It's a wonderful group of people, lots of good friends now. I'm awful pleased that I had an opportunity to participate in this, and I thank everybody for their efforts to me. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Doug. Best wishes. On to Director Mouchnick.
Thank you, Director Parsons. First, I'd like to say, Doug, thank you, not only for your service to the Board, but for your friendship. It's been very much appreciated. I look forward to continuing our relationship even when you're not on the Board. I'd also like to welcome both Debbie and Donna to the Board. I look forward to the opportunity to work with you. I think you'll find this Board is a very cohesive Board. We work very well together. We try to reach consensus on most items, and I find that everybody has comported themselves in a very professional manner, and it's really been an enjoyable activity for me, especially during the COVID situation. It's given me a lot to keep me busy. And I like, I appreciate the leadership of Director Parsons. So thank you, President Parsons.
Thank you very much. On to Director Craig Wayne?
Thank you, President Parsons. I would like to talk about the COVID-19 virus for a moment. You know, we have talked about the fact that our rule expired on people wearing masks. Well, the problem hasn't disappeared, just the rule has disappeared. So I'd like to encourage everybody to continue to wear masks, because our village is, of course, higher risk than other communities. Now, you will no longer be fined if you're not wearing a mask, but the Director of Security has instructed his people that if he sees people who do not have masks on, to have counseling session with them. So again, please protect everybody in our community. Thank you.
And just a little bit about Director Wayne. This year has been pretty difficult on him. He came in charging forward, but due to personal difficulties, he has managed to stick with us throughout meetings. I've called him a couple of times for advice on certain topics and appreciate him hanging in there. He's done very well. Okay, on to Director Reza Kamini.
President Parsons, thank you. I want to welcome also Debbie and Donna on Board. I see you, you haven't seen me yet. Welcome on Board. We had a, you know, 2020 was a trying year for everybody, and I think all of us looking forward for this 2020 that's going to live in, you know, infamy, be over. And hopefully, the 2021 brings, you know, a better year on everything. And maybe COVID-19 is going to disappear. We don't know. But we are still facing the Third Mutual, a lot of issues, big issues that we have overcome. But I have a complete faith in our Board and our leadership that we're going to overcome these issues, and we're going to help ourselves and the village to be a successful community, and people can enjoy living in our community in a peace and serenity that they were looking for. So I'm looking to 2021, and I'm not going to miss 2020 when we is over. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And on to Ralph, if you would, parting comments?
Okay, I've enjoyed working with the Board this past year. I think we've got a great Board and been working together real well. And I also want to extend a welcome to Debbie and Donna as they join us, and I look forward to having a good time, as well as getting work done. Thank you.
Okay. Debbie, any parting comments? Then we'll go to Donna.
No, I am, I am just very happy to be a part of this group. You know, our Board is well-known to be very professional and cohesive, and I hope to learn a lot from all of you, and I'm just looking forward to this whole adventure.
Okay, Donna? Yeah, you're muted there? You're still muted? There she is.
Sorry, I've got it. I'm on my tablet, because my desktop, when I turned it on this morning, I was greeted by Kate Smith singing "God Bless America," and no matter what I did, it couldn't turn it off. So maybe that was prophetic. We certainly need it, but it didn't help. So I'm on my tablet and had a little difficulty, but thank you. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to serve on this Board. It's an amazing community, and this Board and the efforts and work it's done is also amazing, and I just hope to be able to contribute. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looking back over the year, there's people that have done an outstanding job helping us out on different topics, agendas, things like that. I would like to thank the staff wholeheartedly for everything that they've done for us and sticking in there with us. Also, our advisors to different committees and Boards, and we thank you very much for taking your time and giving us your expertise. Also want to thank our legal staff. We've gone through quite a bit of legal things, especially from Sacramento this year. Want to thank them very much. So in wrapping up everything, we've been at this now for, some people, an hour forty-five minutes, and I would like to take a five-minute break, and then we'll go ahead into our 50th organizational meeting of Third Laguna Hills Mutual Board. So at this time, I'll adjourn the meeting. All righty, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and we have a quorum. And I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, Director Mouchnick?
I'll move, but Steve, supposedly, we're not broadcasting on TV6.
Say that again, please.
We are back on Granicus. We are back on online, though.
We're on Granicus, but we're not on TV6.
Right.
So you know.
Yeah, we're just on Granicus for this.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Lynn, do you have anything?
No, I just wanted to say I second it. I didn't hear anything else.
Yeah, Annie seconded it. Okay, if there's no objection, we'll consider this by common consensus. Approval of the meeting minutes for October 3, 2019, the 49th Annual Organization Meeting of Members. Are you a motion?
I second.
Okay.
Kush second.
Okay, Kush is second. Lynn moves. Any discussion? Okay, if there's no other discussion, we'll consider this by common consensus. Okay, Grant, do we have any member comments?
We do not have any comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on to the election of officers, since this is the purpose of today's meeting by Third Bylaw Section 9.2. What we'll do is we'll start with President, First Vice President, Second Vice President, Treasurer, and Secretary in that order, and we will do the voting on each as we go. So right now, I would entertain a motion to open nominations. Okay, Director Mouchnick? Is there a second?
Aye.
Okay, Craig? All righty, thank you. And we'll go ahead and start for nominations for President. Director Mouchnick?
I'd like to nominate Director Parsons to continue on as President.
I second.
Okay, thank you. I'm willing to serve. Any other nominations? Okay. Hearing none, do I hear a motion to close nominations for President? Director Mouchnick?
So move.
Okay. And Donna, seconds? Okay, any discussion about this? Okay, if not?
Move by acclamation.
Okay. By acclamation, unless there's any contrary comments that anybody would like to make. Okay, we'll open up the nominations for First Vice President. John Frankel?
I'll nominate Annie McCary.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay, John Frankel had his hand up.
I second.
Did you want to make a comment? Okay, go ahead, John.
I nominate.
Okay. So that's a second second. Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, do I hear a motion to close nominations for the First Vice President?
So move.
Okay, Donna and Debbie, will you second it? Okay.
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay, discussion? Okay, all in favor by acclamation? All righty, hearing no objections, we'll move on. Second Vice President, nominations are now open.
Does Annie?
Excuse me, I move that, I move that, I can't say. I move for Ralph.
Nominate.
No, excuse me, I nominate Ralph for the Second Vice President.
Okay, Reza?
I second that.
Okay, we have a second.
We haven't heard from Annie to, we haven't heard from Annie that accepted the nomination.
She's willing to serve.
Okay, well, I think, I think we need to go on record to hear that. I'm sorry, but I didn't hear it.
I accept the nomination, and I'm willing to serve as First Vice.
We're on the hook.
Okay, we have a nomination for Second Vice President for Ralph. It's been seconded. Any other nominations?
Does Ralph accept the nomination?
Lynn, did you hear from him?
Yes, I talked to Ralph last night, and he said he was willing to serve.
But he has to do it in the meeting.
And he was called away to a funeral. So.
I think there's no exception.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Craig?
I nominate Kush Bada.
Okay.
I nominate Kush Bada.
Kush?
I second that.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay.
I decline this here. Thank you for the nomination.
Kush declines? Okay. If there are no other nominations, we'll consider this by acclamation. Okay, and we'll move forward to Treasurer. Nominations are now open for Treasurer.
I nominate Robert Mouchnick for Treasurer. Second.
Second.
There's like three seconds here. I don't think they want him to move. Okay, any other nominations? Okay, unless there's any other nominations, we'll go ahead and consider this by acclamation.
Do you accept the nomination, Thomas?
Yes, I'll accept the nomination. Thank you.
Okay.
And I'll get even with all of you.
Okay, nominations are now open for the position of Secretary. John Frankel?
I nominate Lynn Jarrett.
Okay.
I second that.
Second.
Okay, we have two seconds on that. Any other nominations? Okay, are you willing to serve, Lynn?
Yes, I am willing to serve.
Okay. Unless there's any other nominations, we'll consider this by acclamation and move forward. So congratulations to all those that were elected to the positions. Another year of service coming up. We have not had to count the ballots because of COVID-19, and the Inspector of Elections said that that was okay.
We can just say that I verified the count.
Okay, and Cheryl, our Corporate Secretary, has said that she verified the count. Okay, I believe we need to pass or make a motion on the resolution. And Cheryl, would you go ahead and walk us through that, please?
Okay, the resolution is, we're going to put the new officers in the resolution, and then your ex officio officers is Jeff Parker will be Vice President, ex officio. Siobhan Foster will be Assistant Secretary, ex officio, and Betty Parker will be Assistant Treasurer, ex officio. And this resolution supersedes and cancels Resolution 0319108 adopted October 15, 2019. So do I hear a motion to approve the new resolution with the new Board officers?
I'll make a motion.
Debbie?
To approve the.
I second.
Okay, Craig seconds it. Any discussion? Okay, if there's no objection, we'll consider this under common consensus. All right. Thank you so much, folks, for being here. You've been really doing a, carrying a heavy load through this last year. I look forward to this next year not being quite so heavy, but we, each person has spent hundreds of hours this year, donated volunteer time to carry on the process of governance in Third Mutual, and I want to thank you all personally. Look forward to working with this Board again, with Donna and Debbie. We thank you for volunteering to come on the Board. I know we'll be seeing more of you and involving you in committees and moving forward into this next year. So now that the purpose of the meeting has been taken care of, any other business we need to take care of at this time? Okay, if not, I'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you all.